Good evening and welcome to the July 9, 2025 Board of Douglas County Commissioners 530 Business Meeting. Paper copies of the agenda are available for those here in person, and the full packet is available on our website. Reviewing our agenda, we'll first consider our consent agenda. There's five items on that agenda. After our consent agenda, we'll have general public comment. We welcome general public comment for addressing issues not on today's agenda but otherwise related to county business. Given our limited time and the need to have orderly and efficient meetings, we apply certain rules regarding public comments. We'll do our best to enforce these rules consistently and without regard to the point of view expressed by the speaker. One, each speaker will be limited to a total of three minutes of speaking time. However, we will accept public comment of any length in writing. Two, individual speakers may not donate unused time to other speakers. Three, all comments must address topics within the jurisdiction of the county commission. And four, we reserve the right to mute or remove any speaker whose comments are threatening, aggressively hostile, or belligerent. Campaigning for public office during public comment period is not allowed. Please give your full name and address for our meeting minutes and address your comments to the commission. Please also know that the comments received by the commission during our meetings do not necessarily represent the views of Douglas County government, but we value the input. We don't usually respond to general public comments on the spot, but if you'll leave your contact information with county staff, we'll try and get your specific questions answered. After that, we'll move to our regular agenda, and there are no items on our regular agenda this evening. Hang on, let me get these comments done. Lastly, recording of this meeting will be available on the county's YouTube page and website. We do have a public comment period. First, let me ask if there's any consent agenda items that commissioners would like to have removed for further discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to discuss the Twin Oaks project a little bit.
So that would be 1.4. Okay, we'll pull that and move that to our agenda. Any other items, commissioners? Now, for the public, if there's an agenda item, consent agenda item you'd like to have pulled for further discussion, this is when we do that. Okay. All right, commissioners, I'd welcome a motion for our consent agenda.
Commissioner Reed moved to approve consent agenda items 1.1, 1.2, 1.3, and 1.5.
Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Passes unanimously. We'll move on to gen... Nope, we'll take the consent agenda item now. So this is 1.4. Commissioner Dorsey, you asked for it to be pulled. Are there specific things you'd like to talk about?
Well, I just, if the owner or representatives of the owner are present, I just wanted to hear a little bit about the project. I don't have any exceptions to it, but I drive by it four times a day, and my curiosity got the best of me.
Sarah, is staff online?
Yeah, do you want staff?
Yeah, let's have staff do a bit of an overview. We'll just sort of run it like a general agenda item then.
Mary?
Yep. Hello, Mary Miller, City-County Planner. And this has been quite a while in the works. They did do a rezoning a few years ago to the rural tourism because they wanted to improve the facility. And primarily, they wanted to put in a driving area where the driving tee boxes were under a roof. And then you would drive out into the golf course. And it would also have a restaurant with it. So this is what this proposal is. They proposed to expand the clubhouse from the small one that it is today to a much larger one with the under-roof tee boxes. That way, they can go ahead and drive in any weather. And they'll have the restaurant. And there is an additional parking area being proposed along the west side of the property. So this is just an expansion. They've been working on this. It was no different ownership, but they had this dream of kind of expanding it, making it something that's more useful. At least still will use it for their, all their other golf tournaments and the training that they do now. And I believe some of the ownership is, they were going to be attending, so they may be on the Zoom meeting as well. But as noted in the staff report, the intention is to keep everything on the periphery. That way, as much area is left open for the golf course as possible. So they did just move the clubhouse to the east. They did a letter of map revision with FEMA, so they moved, you know, removed it out of the floodplain. And the parking area will be on the west. And so they're maintaining as much of that golf course as possible. Do you have any other questions for me or anything else that I?
Any questions for Mary?
No.
Okay. Any other commissioners' questions for Mary? I know the applicant is here. We'll give the applicant, if you have anything to add, three minutes. Come on up to the microphone. Go ahead. You have to press the button on there, and it'll turn green, and you're good to go. Make sure you get nice and close to that microphone.
All right. Hi, my name is Brandon Yates, and I am the developer. So yeah, to answer your question, I think what we're trying to do is take a place that I think had really great bones and make it something really special. We've renovated the whole golf course and the range. You might have seen, if you've driven by four times a day. But yeah, beyond that, I think it's just tearing down the dilapidated buildings, building one really nice new building, and expanding the parking areas Mary already made mention of. But I think, I think the intent is just to have a really great, I would consider a Class A facility for the community to use. And I know that the schools are dying to get back in and practice and be able to use the facility. So we're trying to get it done as soon as possible.
Will the tee boxes be facing east and west or north and south for driving?
You'll drive toward the north.
Okay.
Yes.
Any other questions, commissioners?
No, but just for complete expertise, I did have a conversation in the hallway with applicant's representative.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other expertise? Okay. Thank you very much. If we have further questions, we'll let you know.
I think it's looking really good.
Thank you. Yeah, it's come a long way. It's, I think it's going to be, anyone who has been to the facility before and comes back once we're reopened, I think, will be in shock. It's going to be really, really nice. So.
Thanks.
Thank you. I think we'll have some public comment on this item. So we'll open it up for public comment. Does anybody want to provide public comment on this? You'll just come to the mic here. Make sure there's a sign-in sheet to your left there. And when you start your comments, if you just introduce yourself to us, that'd be great.
Hello, Melinda Ball, 2709 Rahide Lane, 66046. I'm with the Save the Walker Russa River Valley. And there are a couple of concerns that I have regarding this project, one of which, the main one really, is the encroachment into the floodplain for the river. I would think most of us at this point know that encroaching in floodplains are not a good idea. We can look to the south to Texas. We can look to the southwest to New Mexico, and we can look to North Carolina. All three states have experienced disastrous flooding just this week with, I believe at this point, maybe 120 deaths total. So flooding is a big concern, and rivers need that space to expand. A great quote that I pulled out of the Texas Tribune was, "Rivers have longer memories than we do." So removing, removing the, doing the map revision is really the concern here. If anything, we need to expand the map and allow FEMA, if it still exists, in the next few months. Of course, that's another issue that we are facing ahead of time. But having, having those additional protections with the river is incredibly important. I think we also know, I can't speak specifically to this, but other than, I know most golf courses, and I haven't seen anything to indicate otherwise, use a large amount of chemicals to create their green space. So that is a concern for water quality. If they decide to go down the route of a more natural golf course, maybe that's a bit of a better path. But it doesn't seem like that's the case here. Additionally, I struggle to see how this matches and aligns with the open space plan, particularly around the Walker Russa River Valley project that the county has elevated as one of their top projects. So with that, thank you.
Give an additional public comment?
Good afternoon. I'm James F. Burey Jr. They call me Jeff. And I have been the owner-operator of Twin Oaks Golf for almost 30 years. And so I've got some history there, and I'm pretty proud of our history. And I come here to support the plan, the site plan and the project that Brandon Yates has put forth. I think it's going to be fantastic. I have a couple notes here. Just take a minute. What that, but Twin Oaks has done, been meant to this community, I think, is pretty amazing. We've served Baldwin City, Perry LaCompton, all the Lawrence schools. We've created golf teams. We've done things that I think weren't even imagined before Twin Oaks was built. I didn't have the resources to improve it. I say hello to Mary, who helped me three years ago, and the place was rezoned, and Brandon purchased it. I just want to say what, what I see in the plans and what I've seen done so far is spectacular. What's going to happen, you're going to have a gem of a facility in the eastern part of Douglas County, and it's going to be a treasure. When people drive into this county from K-10, from Johnson County, they're going to be blown away with the beauty of this place. Everything that Brandon does and things I've seen him do are quality. Things I couldn't, didn't have the resources to do, he's doing them. He told me when he bought the place, he says, "I'm going to make you proud." And he is already. I am just bubbly proud. So I wholeheartedly support this. And according, you know, in 30 years, I witnessed a lot of heavy rains and floods in the Walker Russa. And we had standing water at times, but never anything of crisis. There's the Oxbow just to the eastern part of the golf course, and they have the culvert that I think they built when they built K-10. That handles a lot of stuff. We basically operated 30 years without any major, major problems. So I think during that time, we had at least two 50-year floodstorms. So anyhow, didn't plan on mentioning that. But I'm done, and thank you so much. And I wholeheartedly endorse this program, this plan. Thank you.
You. Any other public comment?
Hello, my name is Matthew Vogt. I live here in Douglas County, Yodora, just several miles from Twin Oaks. I'll be very brief. I also am here to support Brandon and the endeavor that we're going down. It's been a long time coming. We have many schools, many kids programs. Myself, I'm the president of the Cobb Valley Junior Golf Program, which was brainchild, of course, by Jeff Burey, like most things in golf around this area. We're very proud of it. And we've been looking forward, very much so, to using our programs, utilizing them through the facility. In addition to our program, Yodora Schools use it, Baldwin City does, KU, of course, does. There's a lot of kids that look forward to this being back up and running, as do I as well. In addition to the great programs that we've had run there and look forward to running there, I'd like to see the commerce stay here in Douglas County. The people that want to do a year-round golf facility, I'd like them not to have to drive to Overland Park or drive to Topeka. I think it'd be a very great benefit to have everyone stay here and maybe even bring the people from the opposite directions to come to Douglas County to see the new facility and to be able to utilize the product that will be there. That's all I've got, but I do appreciate the time. I appreciate the ability to speak here, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Hello, Adam Lang, 1714 Vermont Street.
Can you say your last name one more time for me?
Lang, L-A-N-G.
Thanks.
Get that mixed up a lot. I wrote out my comments, just to make it easier for myself. My comments today are regarding consent agenda item 1.4, concerning improvements to the Twin Oaks course in Yodora. I stand here as a concerned citizen that cares for the health and well-being of the Walker Russa River Valley and all of our natural areas here in Douglas County and West Save the Walker Russa River Valley as well. These changes to existing areas and improvements to existing structures may sound innocuous in nature, but it is always these small changes and improvements that lead to further degradation of the land that has already suffered greatly at the hands of development. Golf courses typically use six to nine times the amount of fertilizer as crop land, a fact I do not want brushed off when discussing what the spaces are. I've had the discussion multiple times with my mom and like multiple people that, yes, golf courses are outdoor spaces, but still, it is the same as essentially saying crop land. It is a monoculture. Courses are often considered green spaces to city staff and commissioners, but these hyper-maintained spaces are not better for maintaining our climate than a sprayed front lawn or monoculture cornfield. This course's proximity to the Walker Russa River is what concerns me most. With all of this use of fertilizers, pesticides, et cetera, these will certainly run off into the Walker Russa River and degrade the habitat that exists there. In our time of climate change and rapid ecosystem degradation, this is simply unacceptable. Why bring this up now? The course already exists, right? We're just trying to build onto what we already have. Development is a chain reaction and rarely stops at just a single building. Setting the precedent that any business can continue to push into natural areas is something I have to speak out against. In Texas, we are seeing the consequences of continued development over existing natural systems that help to protect us from floodwaters and natural disasters. 100 so far have died in these floods. And storms are once seen as 500-year storms, now happening multiple times a year. Storms that people title as 100-year storms are happening every five years, every two years, every two months. Like, they're not 100-year storms anymore. The developers at Twin Oaks have filed with FEMA to rezone part of their space as not existing within the floodplain. While this may be legal under our current era of crumbling environmental protections, it is now becoming up to us on the local level to make these regulations ourselves and say no to developing unnatural areas. I cannot stand by while these natural areas get degraded simply for a business that is in no way a necessity for a community. I would finish my time by pointing out that these expansions are only the beginning of development. In many of these spaces, they have filed to build the tasting room, expand their parking area, and more than double the size of their existing spaces, buildings, not spaces, to expand their business far beyond the size it was before. Once a development becomes successful, where does the development stop?
Thank you. That's your time.
Yeah. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Michael Allman. I'm with the Save the Walker Russa River Valley Group. I'm opposed to site plan SP 250019 for the expansion of Twin Oaks Golf Course and in support of the county's pursuing alternative options within the open space plan. I consider the conditions inadequate to address my concerns. What began as a simple golf driving range some 35 years ago has experienced development creep and currently is what it is, but it's time to halt its escalation. Although a golf facility may be appropriate for locating in a river bottom according to code, by an ecological accounting, it's the wrong land use in the wrong location. My reasons are, golf courses are a land use that attracts more urbanization, just what we don't want in the Walker Russa River Valley per the open space plan. When I hear terms describing this as spectacular, it makes me additionally concerned. That makes, you know, the more amenities, the larger it is, the more it's going to be a magnet for urbanization. Although this golf course is not immediately adjacent to the river, the Oxbow within the property does connect to the river. Acre per acre, golf courses use more nitrate fertilizers, pesticides, herbicides than does intensive agriculture. The most intensive chemical use is for the putting greens. Not only do the Twin Oaks chemicals routinely leach into the shallow groundwater, in heavy rains, they wash through the Oxbow and enter the river. The worst-case scenario of chemical contamination will be when the river floods. There are at least four subwatersheds that can flood Twin Oaks. Washington Creek, which experienced 500-year floods in 2017 and 2019, Pleasant Grove Tributary, Coal Creek, and Spring Creek, none of which are managed by a dam like Clinton. A percent likelihood of flooding in one of these creeks or more combined is predictable. Land uses in the river bottom should be restricted to those that don't pose an ecological threat to our groundwater and streams. Things like the Waterski Lake, for example. This type of facility has very intensive impacts and has great potential for expansion even more, as we've seen over the history of it, attracting even more urbanizations counter to the open space plan. So please deny this site plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Online, Sarah?
Ellen Johnson, do you want to provide public comment on this item? I'm going to move you into the panel.
Yes. My name is Ellen Johnson. I didn't come to this meeting to comment on this, but I do have a concern after listening to everything everyone's had to say. Kansas is a beautiful state. Nature here provides for many beautiful things to flourish, and there are many beautiful places where beautiful things grow and many spaces for beautiful things to be built. And traditions often do transfer, you know. So even, but my concern here is I heard one gentleman talking about this sorts of pesticides that could wind up in the drinking water. And my father is a Vietnam veteran who has suffered due to his exposure to Agent Orange. And I am watching him deteriorate over the course of many years with Parkinson's. And this is very serious, and this is a problem that didn't really show up for decades. And it's debilitating, and it's tragic. So I am cautioning the county and any people to, to ensure, to make a study of what chemicals and pesticides will be used, how much of that will wind up in the water supply, and what will make it into the drinking water, and what will people and animals be exposed to. I think it's very important, because we, we don't need fear mongering. We don't need to just run, "Oh, no pesticides." But it's, I think that, you know, science being what it is, if there's a way to observe and quantify the risks to the population, then I think that should be done. Because I've seen what happens when, when the responsible people have failed. I have direct experience with the damage that pesticides can cause an individual, and that, that doesn't mean that I'm going to run around with a pitchfork or say that the sky is falling. But I think that that sort of impact on public health needs to be carefully examined anytime there's a possibility that these sort of chemicals can wind up in the drinking water. And it might be in the county's best interest to discuss with the, with the people who will be maintaining this, what they will be using on these grounds. Thank you.
Thank you, Ellen. Anybody else, Sarah? Okay. Bring it back up to the commission. Further questions, discussion?
Mr. Chair, we usually allow the applicant to respond to public comment.
Sure. Yates, would you like to respond to any of that?
Okay. I appreciate everyone's comments and concerns. But I think I'd start by reminding everyone that nothing with respect to the golf course is changing. The application is simply about expanding the parking lot. And we're, again, tearing down three dilapidated buildings and building one new one, which would be essentially the same square footage. So, you know, as far as the golf course and all the other things that have been mentioned, that, that stuff is going to be the same as it has been for 35 years. So we, we don't intend or we're expect to change any of that. And I, I think we did, we did, in fact, have the Loma Letter, the study done in the floodplain, or that, that proved that we were out of the floodway. And so I think all the concerns are maybe, maybe a little misguided, or, or they misunderstand the, the plan. Because, again, all we're doing is expanding the parking lot to the north, and, and again, building this building. So. That's, that's all I had.
Thank you.
If you want to stay up there for a quick question, that's right. There hasn't been any mention of overnight or camping or anything like that. This is a day-use kind of facility, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Thanks.
Mary, since it came up, can, can you just talk a little bit about staff's process with this particular FEMA process? I'm trying to make sure I reference the right thing, the letter of map. Can you just talk a little bit about what your process is for interacting with that and reviewing that as part of this application?
You know, zoning and codes may have had some, working with them. Usually, they work directly with FEMA. If they want to do a letter of map revision, they just work directly with FEMA. I don't know if anyone with zoning and codes worked with them. We don't. If they give us a letter of map revision that FEMA has approved, we don't challenge that. I don't know if anybody from zoning and codes is here today, if they have any more information on that letter of map amendment.
That's okay. You answered the question, Mary. Like, a letter was provided that comes directly from FEMA, which an applicant or developer gets directly and then provided to you as part of the application process for review. Correct? Okay. Thank you for clarifying.
So commissioners, I remind ourselves and the public that this is zoned as rural tourism and not as general business. And so the idea of, you know, this turning into something else or creep or something else is really limited.
or creep or something else is really limited. That rural tourism is kind of that safeguard around that idea to the public. That's how that gets managed.
So then would this be evaluated per the Open Spaces Plan?
So the Open Space Plan is for willing landowners only. And one of my talking points when we were adopting it was that in no way, shape, or form did I ever want it to be weaponized against development, against things that are occurring within our code that we've already, you know, agreed to and allowed as a community. So it wouldn't fall under that unless the applicant wanted it to, though by some definitions, you know, a recreation, you know, green space, even though it is, you know, not a diverse ecosystem, might even fall under that. I think that's kind of part of those longer conversations as we kind of have about the Waukeruasa River Valley.
Okay. So I just wanted to clarify, because the Open Space Plan was referenced, and so, and since we did not have a grid referencing the Open Space Plan, I just wanted to clarify that that's the reason why it was not...
It's not a plan like that, per se.
Okay.
It's just a, it's a project to develop more open space and specifically around the Waukeruasa, but it's not an overlay or map.
Okay. Thank you.
And Sarah, Sean, please jump in to correct me if I'm misspeaking about this, but sort of specifically, the goal around the Waukeruasa River Valley right now is being in a place of study and information gathering about the entire corridor, which is quite a long stretch. I don't remember the miles off the top of my head, but it's significant, right? And so that process is sort of underway so that we can have a fuller picture as a community about all of the assets there, natural and otherwise, all of the risk potential, risk mitigation opportunities. And then, you know, to Commissioner Willie's point, the idea that perhaps within that area, that there are some interested and willing landowners who have a desire to contribute their land or do something specific around that open space planning. So I hope that illustrates a little bit better about, you know, we're not really talking about parcels of land yet. We're talking about an entire corridor and trying to really gather holistic information so that we can strategize around opportunities for risk mitigation is how I perceive that.
Thank you.
I'd actually say that the whole range of values that was expressed here on this item are all really relevant to that ongoing conversation. And there are, you know, places of give and take, and that's why it's kind of that bigger community conversation. So I would welcome any at all to kind of continue to engage with that conversation. I'd also say I am not always a big fan of the remapping, rezoning that FEMA is willing to do, and have had concerns with that when we were talking about residential or larger areas that I thought were something worth flagging. This being a golf course going back into a golf course and, you know, facilities going into other similarly sized facilities, and it's not, you know, residential kind of place, that I don't have the same level of concern there. And balancing that with that, I think that the space, the golf space is an amenity for the community, and I think that overbalances that. So I guess I should say I'm supportive.
Mary, I just want to confirm, we don't have any evidence that the FEMA redrawing of the map is incorrect in any way, do we?
No, I don't think any of us would have the expertise to evaluate that. You know, they provided the map that FEMA gave us. And when zoning and codes, when they look at floodplain development permits, they would look at that. So they would have the most expertise dealing with floodplain, but we have no reason to think that it's incorrect.
Thank you. And question for Sarah, I think, and I...
We have several floodplain certified managers in zoning and codes, so those, I mean, we've got at least two certified floodplain managers in zoning and codes. So my impression is that if they had a concern, they would have expressed it.
They would have flagged it.
Yeah.
And then my second question is, I know our county councillor isn't here, but I do think that if we... This could be a pretty tricky situation if FEMA, if we don't have evidence that the floodplain is inhibiting the site plan, it would be pretty tricky to argue that. Am I making sense?
Yeah, and let's remember, you already have an approved conditional use permit for this use, and we're just, and this was approved when the conditional use permit was approved, and we're just talking about modifying, a slight modification to the site plan.
Okay.
So that's also a approved conditional use.
I think we're probably in the same situation when you talk about pesticides and herbicides, that the regulator by the state of Kansas, and we get into tricky spots if we try and micromanage that within however much, there are times when we would very much like to.
Yeah, I appreciate the public comments, and I appreciate the constant vigilance against floodplain. I think that we need community members doing that. And I hope you'll continue, and I'm sure you will, to continue to be engaged. I think it's a little tricky for us in the seat we're in if we have a revised floodplain map to say, and we have staff at zoning and codes who has essentially reviewed it, to say that we think they're wrong. And I do want to comment on one thing that I've heard before in here, that certain development patterns, certain types of development will spring others. That is a logical fallacy which I don't agree with, this idea that just because one type of building or development happens, essentially, we will be forced to do the same type of, a similar type or a more intensive type of development. I understand people who think that might happen, but I want to caution us of assuming that because we put a road in or because we approve a site plan, that suddenly this becomes a giant development area. I don't think it does, and if it did, if it was incorporated into the city of Udora, it would need to go through their process. If it was part of the county, it would need to go through our process. So I agree with Commissioner Willie. I appreciate the concern, and I know it's a concern for this commission based on our Open Space Plan and that we need to be paying attention to it, but this one doesn't raise to a level that I think I could defend it not voting for it.
Any other comments?
I would make a motion if you want one.
Go for it.
Okay. I move to approve site plan SP 2519 for improvements to the Twin Oaks Golf Facility at 1326 East 1900 Road based on the findings presented in the staff report, subject to the following conditions 1, 2, 3A through 3D.
Second.
Moving seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes 5-0. Okay, that closes our consent agenda. So now we'll move on to general public comments. This is for items that are not on our agenda. Is there anyone here who'd like to provide general public comment?
Good evening. My name is Seamus Alderton. I am the current president of our labor union that represents the firefighters and paramedics for LDCFM. I just wanted a quick opportunity to provide some comment on the business that was conducted this morning during the hearing regarding the budget for that organization. So first, all of you in county management, I think, deserve some recognition for the grace that you guys have had trying to navigate LDCFM's budget conversations with the counterparts at City Hall. So the city's budget is, once again, a bit of a hot mess. And there is some real chance that fire and EMS services in our community are going to be scaled back next year. I want to be clear that you guys are not, and we don't think that you guys are the villains in this story. I think most people watching that, watching this, would know that. But you do have the chance to be the heroes. You have the authority and hopefully the inclination to not only push back against what the city is attempting, but to move us further in the right direction. So there's been numerous presentations in this chamber as well as, you know, at City Hall. We've come to identify a few things, right? So, one, there's an obvious, clear need, a human need, for more 24-hour ambulances staffed on a daily basis. Two, between an increase in EMS revenues and other budgetary information, this body could afford to staff another 24-hour ambulance without a tax increase starting next year. And three, LDCFM currently has the infrastructure and apparatus to staff those ambulances. We just need you guys to give us that direction and that blessing and that budget authority to do so. It comes down to you five. In any attempt to complicate the issue beyond that, it's just, it's political speech. It's fodder for the newspapers, right? There was a comment made this morning about the county has been or should be very reluctant to make a move as the first organization on the growing or the expansions. I caution you against that mentality. That's a political answer to a human need. And it's the same style of politics that has failed my membership at City Hall for nearly a decade over this issue. Don't subscribe to that style of politics and that mentality on this issue. It's time to reject that. It's time to be leaders. Our fire captains on fire grounds are our leaders, and they are the first ones to walk through the door. Let's structure fire. Walk through the door with us. Be leaders. Thank you.
John Ems Lawrence. So I've sat here with you and your partners who are here presenting their need for supplemental budget requests in part because of federal and state grant cuts. They're presenting those requests against a published budget, but it got me curious, and so many of them are in trouble with their own budgets. So I went and researched grant cancellations at the federal and the state level. Kansas is losing $33 million of healthcare grants, and we all know the changes for Medicaid. Mental health and substance use treatment is losing over $7 million in federal grants, and that's just so far. Forty-six agencies associated with the Kansas Department of Aging and Disability Service had federal grant cuts. Community development block grants are cut, $740 million so far. Home investment partnership programs are cut, $430 million so far. Education grants are being cut. Natural and cultural heritage grant programs are being cut. Capital investment cuts of over $130 million so far in road, bridge, and facility projects are going by the wayside. Lawrence, the city of Lawrence, receives federal grants in the amount of $39 million per year, according to their December 23 city comprehensive financial report. This is one of the reasons why they're so strapped. Their dollars are applied regularly to public safety, public works, health and social services, cultural and recreation. And nearly 100% of the Lawrence Douglas County Housing Authority is funded by federal HUD grants, which are being cut. So I'm not sure that the county is going to be able to make up these cuts, even for all of the supplicants, much less for Lawrence coming begging for more money. So what are the grants that the county is losing? Those are not identified, as far as I can see, in the current published budget document. The county budget ought to make clear what the budget reliance is on state and federal grants, and make that more transparent so citizens can understand the risk going forward. Federal grants are becoming extinct, and we're going to have to live on our own recognizance. So we should make it clear to citizens what their priorities might have to be so that they can help make some decisions. And I agree with what was just said. One of the criteria that Lawrence is using is a little misplaced in terms of cutting our police and fire, but this is why. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Any other public comment?
Ellen, I'm going to give you permission to talk. You're in the panel, and you can provide public comment.
Okay, thank you. I came here today because I've spoken twice about, you know, how I feel there's a need for external healthcare oversight. And when I talk to people on the streets about this, they tend to assume some sort of adversarial relationship between the sheriff-elect and inmates, or between themselves and the sheriff-elect. And they say, you know, "What was he doing then?" And my answer to people at that time while this was going on was, you, the same as I just heard someone on the commission express, you cannot expect a sheriff to micromanage a jail down to every last inmate. And to me, it is highly inappropriate to jump the chain of command. This is a large and complex organization with many diverse functions, and it serves over 120,000 people, more than that. And so I just want to say that I've only ever heard the sheriff express an active interest and concern for the treatment of inmates in the jail, and that over time, every action that he's taken that was visible to me indicated that he was dutiful to that end. And so I want to say that in light of my gratitude for this sheriff's efforts to see to the protection of vulnerable inmates, and my familiarity with many jail staff who are that conscientious individuals, I just want it to be publicly known that my request for oversight is not only for the protection of inmates, and I do feel that this is necessary, but my request for oversight is also in the interest of the protection of staffs, in the protection of the community, in the protection of public officials. I feel that this is truly in the best interest of everyone. And I honestly, I did have to give this a lot of thought for many different reasons. And I don't feel that we give leadership of such complex and large organizations the tools that they need to administer to their responsibilities, especially something like healthcare, without some form of oversight. And that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ellen. Anyone else, Sarah? Okay. That'll close public comment. We don't have any general business items this evening or regular agenda items. We do have an appointment, however. Commissioners, in Sarah's update, she noted that Stephen Crane would like to be reappointed to Property Crimes Compensation Board. Anyone want one time on that?
Nope. I came ready to make a motion.
Motion away, if you were prepared.
I move to appoint, reappoint Stephen Crane to the Property Crimes Compensation Board, and appreciate his desire to continue serving.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes 5-0. I think that's all for appointments, right, Sarah? Okay, we'll move on to Commissioner and Administrator Masalinas, and we start with Sarah's memo.
Thanks, commissioners. Just a brief memo in the packet. Just want to remind folks that we are not meeting on the 23rd. We do have a work session on the 30th, which will be your budget hearing for the Capital Improvement Plan, NCFD number one. And then we're working on at that meeting an update on the Public Safety Building Phase II, and then in the packet, then on the 6th, we'll probably have some votes on the Public Safety Building Phase II. Commissioners, just want to really appreciate all your time and attention over the last couple of days regarding budget hearings. We're making progress. We start again tomorrow, and we'll continue through this progress. But thank you all for your continued diligence. That's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioners, any miscellaneous items?
I have one. Based on my comments yesterday, I got an email... I have one. Based on my comments yesterday, I got an email from Peter Rinn, who's a retired lawyer, and is also the former chair of the Douglas County Extension Council. I raised the question if our deliberations would count as following the letter of the law regarding the extension budget. And he, he, well, I can just read what he said. KSA 2-610 is clear that board action within the 10-day time limit is required and not just deliberation. So what I would suggest is maybe on the consent agenda, we put the extension budget on there after we deliberate on that Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, and come to a conclusion so that we follow the law.
Commissioners, I've, I've had numerous conversations with Extension Council staff on this, and I believe that what we are in accordance with the law. I've never been, I would hate to make any of the commissioners feel like we're not following the law on this. The statutes for the extension councils are from the 1950s. We submit all of our information to the state for the budget office, and I've never once been told that we're not following the law from an official at the state related to the Extension Council budget. As you also heard from Marlon Bates, they have the ability to amend their budget as, as needed, and they, that's what they've done in the past. I would say that if, when we talked about this last year, you would put their base budget, which would be less funding than you're currently recommending on their, on the agenda, because you will not have made a published budget yet at that time. So if you want me to add something to the agenda, I will, I just don't know that we need to have a separate conversation about that unless you feel it's important to do so. And then you're gonna all need to deliberate on what that amount is before we put it on the agenda.
I also have a letter dated December 20, 2023, from our county council suggesting that 2610 requires us to be done.
It doesn't require separate action like that. I have the letter.
We had a lot of conversation about this last year, was it, Commissioners? I mean, I think we had a pretty long work session about it. I'm, I'm comfortable with the way that we're doing it now. I understand Commissioner Dorsey, if you feel differently, I suppose we could pull the commission. But I, I think my understanding with staff, there are members of the Extension Council Board that maybe don't agree, and that's fine to disagree. But I think they, they presented to us a budget, and I heard their executive director say that they were fine with the way that we're moving forward with it. So I don't see any reason to change right now.
Yeah, I agree with Commissioner Kelly, and I think, I mean, given the amount of time that we spent talking about this during last year's budget session, and in subsequent meetings with the Extension Council, plus the outside of public meeting discussions between executive staff of the county and Extension Council, as well as legal counsel, that an agreement was come to that, for a path forward, that, how the timing of things work is working fine and in compliance with statute, though some individuals may disagree with that, that executive leadership and the board at large for extension has, has said that this is fine to move forward this way. And so I don't feel comfortable readjusting that in the midst of the process and trying to, to scramble to insert new and different steps when there's already been an agreement that we are within compliance. And to Sarah's point that of all these years, that the states have not, that the state departments that, that receive and review and verify those budgets have not indicated that there's anything problematic about the process, about the timeline piece of the process.
I guess I feel like a little blindsided at the last minute with this conversation in terms of if this was a change to the budget process the Commissioners wanted us to take, I would have appreciated knowing about it in advance and talking about it earlier. Because we would have, I would have brought it to you at a different format, and we would have talked about what form would have been brought to Commissioners in advance of that timeline. I have not received any formal state budget forms from the Extension Office because we agreed to this methodology. So I also have no information to present to you other than what's been included in our budget documents for you to approve next week.
I think what they attached to their budget proposal was what they gave to the county clerk, which met the requirements of the state statute.
But it's, then has to be brought before the county commission, and the clerk doesn't set the agenda. I set, I set the agenda, and I don't have that document, other than what was given to us in the budget documents, which was the process that we agreed to earlier this year. So it's, it's just, I, I thought we had agreed to a process that was earlier this year, and now this feels very sort of last minute in terms of a change in operation. If we would like to talk about a different process, I'm glad to do that. I just wish I wasn't doing that on July 9.
I feel we've already talked about it extensively over the last year and a half or so.
Being that we have two new Commissioners, this is like the first time we're seeing this letter. I feel.
No, it was an issue to discuss, Commissioners, or I would have brought it to your attention. But when we talked to, so.
So could we have this conversation tomorrow during, yeah, budget, or when we have our deliberations? Or how, how would we have this conversation to, to understand why our attorney, John Bullock, is recommending that we follow, county commission then has 10 days to approve that proposed budget and return it to the Extension Council Board upon receipt of the return budget?
I think that letter in isolation is probably not wise. I think if you wanted to have a full conversation, I can see if county council's available to come talk to it and Extension Council. But again, we talked about all of this in the fall, and we agreed to a process, including the Extension Council. So I'm very confused as to why this is, why this is happening at this point. And I have no documents to put before you. I can ask the clerk if he has something, but then I'm going to recommend to you that we go back to their base budget, and that you recommend that until you could finish your deliberations, which would be a cut for the Extension Council, unless you all direct me differently.
Well, it's just coming up now, because I just got the email about four hours ago.
Which is why, like, we just, we just worked it all out last year. So that's what seems, if the Extension Council had concerns with how we were doing the process, I was not aware.
And I don't think it's, I know Peter, I've met with them about this very issue. I don't think it's fair to say that the Extension Council has a problem with it. Peter is a former member of the Extension Council. And when you and I met Commissioner Dorsey with the Extension Council, there was a member of the Extension Council who had a problem with our process. But as was communicated by their leadership, that was one person's opinion. That they, the leadership of the Extension Council was fine with the process. So, you know, I, I want to, I want to honor that people can have differences of opinion, but I don't want it to derail the process that we've put in place, the work that Sarah and her team have done. Because I, this does feel, I agree with Sarah, this feels a little blindsided here, right before the last day of hearings. And I think, you know, we may learn from it if we want to talk about it for next year and see if we want to head in a different direction. But based on like, the conversations we've had for multiple years, I felt like we've made a lot of progress with Douglas County Extension and understanding their regs. They came to us with their entire handbook. We went through the handbook with them. I believe our county counselor was at that meeting. We talked about how we might be able to do this because of the challenges of our timeline. So I appreciate that we have two new Commissioners, and we're getting caught up on, on all of that. And that's, that's gotta be a lot. But, but I do, I ask that we continue to go forward with our process as is. And then, if we want to revise it for next year, we could have that conversation for next year.
I did serve on the Extension Council for the, the full two terms that I was eligible for that, and served on the, on the council with Peter Rinn. And I, so I'm, you know, sensitive to how these conversations have played out, and, and really proud that we got to where we did, because there were a lot of opinions. But, you know, we're not hearing from their, their, that their board has, you know, a unified opinion that this is, that something needs to be different, or from their executive director. We're hearing from, you know, one member, former member of that board. And I, I think that is a really dangerous precedent to upset the apple cart of a year and a half worth, worth of kind of relationship building that we've had with Extension. We've come such a long way with them. I think they're, I think we're doing well together, and Sarah and Marlon are meeting regularly. Commissioner Anderson and I have met with Marlon, I meet with him regularly. I think we've gotten to a good place, and I don't want to upset that either.
Okay, I'm not hearing the majority of the Commission wanting to do the directions. Okay. We okay? We're moving forward? Okay. Any other miscellaneous items? All right, we will reconvene. I guess it's not really, because this is our general business meeting, we're going to adjourn. But if you want to come and hang out with us some more for budget hearings, we'll be here tomorrow at 9:00 AM. We are adjourned.